I believe we have Mr. Seifert now.
Hello?
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 Hey Bob, can you hear me?
Yes sir, I can hear you.
Okay, good. You're in and you're in good shape. We're waiting on... Steve, are you ready to call the meeting order and everything now? Look at everybody posting this up here like, hey, I like that. There I am. Shazam.
Call to order. Call to order. Welcome to the school board meeting on February 4th, 2025. We are conducting a meeting tonight for a superintendent search update. And in accordance with policy 1-6.9, electronic participation in meetings from remote locations. Those of you that are looking at us, you can see that there are only four school board members here present. That's because Mr. Bob May will participate in this evening's meeting by Zoom from his home as he continues to recover from surgery. Mr. Bob Seifert will participate by Zoom from Florida due to work obligations. And Mr. Martin will participate by Zoom from Richmond due to a family emergency and illness. Some other information before we get started about the roadmap that will proceed after tonight. In about a month, on March the 5th, we'll have a candidate slate presentation from 2:00 to 5:00 in the afternoon. And again, that will be, we'll open the session and then we'll go into closed session because that will involve personnel matters, candidates, and we have privacy obligations. And on March 21st, the first round of interviews will occur, and that's an all-day meeting. And that again will open and then go into close because we'll be interviewing candidates. And then on March 27th will be our final interviews, which will be all day. And again, that will be opened and then closed, and that's when we'll be conducting our interviews. So with that, we will be receiving from HYA, which is the company that is preparing a leadership profile report for us to take a look at about some of the desired characteristics and what the community said when they had meetings both in person and also virtual a couple of weeks back. Or maybe it was a year ago, it seems like to me right now, but I think it was just a couple of weeks back. So, Mr. May, I think are you, are you with us, Mr. Seifert and Mr. Martin? Are y'all all with us?
Mr. Seifert, too.
I'm here and Steve's here. I mean, and I've heard Ryan, I've talked to Ryan, and now I've heard from Bob Seifert. You there, Bob?
I am.
Here we go.
Okay, all good. Okay. Mr. Bill Adams, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I think everyone on the board has met you, and I don't mind turning the meeting over to you so that you can, I guess...
Yep.
Give us all your information regarding the profile report that you've accumulated.
Well, thank you, and thank you all for the work done during the past, actually, five weeks of intake. And we've heard from almost 1,700 people between the surveys and the focus groups. Dr. Brown, who's with me tonight, is going to actually present the executive summary of the leadership profile. And then all of the comments we'll be using as we develop questions, once the candidates are identified. And we'll also be using those, those comments that were made by all of the stakeholders when we do a transition meeting, once you've made your selection. You very accurately have given the dates and the next steps in the process. We're excited. Once Dr. Brown completes the leadership profile, I'll go over a few of the comments made by you, you, the board collectively. And then we'll certainly answer any questions about that input. And then Dr. Brown's going to present the results of the survey itself. All of you should have had a chance to, to look at that. We'll certainly try to address any questions. And then the real action tonight is the desired characteristics. Because once you approve those, then we can really get to the next phase. We've got a number of applicants in the system now, but tomorrow morning, or possibly tonight, depending on how late this meeting goes, we'll be sending those desired characteristics out to a number of applicants who are waiting for that to actually submit an application. And that's also what we're going to be doing, using to vet candidates. So with that, Dr. Brown, if you'll take over.
Okay, thank you so much. And it's nice to virtually be with all of you this evening. And it was truly a pleasure to conduct focus groups with your stakeholders. I enjoyed it very much. And just a quick thank you to Terri Stone, who really helped us to plan all the meetings and get the invitations out to everyone. None of this data collection could happen without Terri's help, so really want to make sure you all know how valuable that help was. So, for our community input, we had over 200 people attend various focus groups and over 1,400 who took the survey. So our goal in the focus groups is to collect, it's qualitative data. It's a qualitative data exercise where we ask all the focus groups the same questions. And then we look for themes within the answers that are then presented in the leadership profile report. So you all did also receive a copy of the notes that we took at these different meetings. And you'll find that what I'm basically doing is summarizing the themes that can be found in those. And then I'll talk about the survey. And what I'm really glad about is that we saw a lot of common themes between the focus groups and the survey, which does mean, you know, from a data collection standpoint, that we know we're on a, on a good track when we hear it, both in person and virtually through a survey, the same type of things. So if there are not any questions, I'll go ahead and get started. Just kind of jump in.
Do you want us to ask questions when, at the end? Or would you mind if board members interrupt you as you're going on? How would you like for that to be conducted?
Oh, I teach grad school, and I welcome interu-, you know, interruptions because that means I know people are listening, so please just jump in.
Okay. All right. This is a board that will jump in. Thank you.
I'm glad, because a lot of times my grad students do not. Okay, so what I wanted to do is just summarize very briefly some of the themes. The main two areas that we'll spend time on tonight are the strengths of the division and the challenges that the division is facing. So some highlights along that way. We did hear that there is an extremely robust curriculum that the students in Hanover enjoy. And this goes from, you know, the IB or the CTE. Children can find themselves within your programs, and we heard that over and over again. You have a talented and dedicated staff. That the sense of community in Hanover, you know, Hanover's a big county, the sense of community is very special. It's a highly engaged community based on some traditional family core values. The size of the, the division, though, in comparison to other divisions in Virginia, is kind of the perfect size. I heard it said many times that you were the Goldilocks of divisions. Not too big, not too small, but just big enough to be able to do really innovative things, but not so big that you couldn't establish relationships with one another as far as your staff is concerned. That it's, it's a great place. Hanover County is a great place to live, work, and grow, and has an amazing reputation in the state of Virginia and beyond. Because you're student-focused, but also, not just academically, but also the social, emotional well-bearing of your students is very important. You have strong leadership, and that you've worked hard to have safe schools. That's kind of a summary. I know you can read it all. It's all in the report. But that is a summary of the themes that we heard from the strengths. I'll go on to the challenges now, and some of the themes that we heard. We asked the question, what do you think are the challenges that the division is facing? Most importantly, what challenges do you expect the permanent superintendent to address upon his or her appointment? So there was a focus on accountability, adherence to policies, regulations, and consistency in enforcing expectations. We did hear that across the board. We heard that there needed to be some trust building that occurred between parts of your community and your, your division. That teacher retention and recruitment is a concern, even though the strength is you have great teachers and staff. The worry is that keeping them and recruiting them. We did hear that you're working on your salary scales to make them more comparable to other divisions in your area, but that is something that was spoken about. The changing demographics and enrollment growth, that many people are leading, are moving to Hanover. And that is going to result in facility issues, meaning updating facilities, building new facilities. So that's going to be a challenge that the new superintendent needs to make sure is addressed. And also that the demographics are changing and make sure that everyone feels welcome. Student achievement. Again, your student achievement scores are very good. Your reputation is good. But there was a theme amongst the focus groups that it was important that the schools continue to use research-based strategies to improve student performance. And that, that another challenge that the new superintendent will face is to make sure that the communication between, between board and staff, between division and community, just all areas, that you have someone who's a very strong communicator and who believes in transparency and letting people know what is happening. And those are the challenges, the themes for the challenges that we heard. Questions or comments?
We're still all good.
All right. All right. Well, now I'm moving to the survey, and I'm going to go ahead and share a PDF. I know you have this, but it has some, this is something, you know, it's yours if you, if you want to distribute it. Like I said, over 1,400 people took the survey. I know that's not a great sampling of the county, but it actually is a pretty good number when it comes to taking the surveys. So you're going to see that there was, there was a lot of alignment between the results of the survey and the focus group themes. Of the people who, who took the survey, sorry, I'll leave it on the table of contents. You had 1,453 people take the survey. By far, the largest group, 739 of them, or 51% of those responded, identified themselves as parents of current students. Staff came in next, with 353 staff, or approximately 24% of the survey respondents. And the third highest group was students. 170 students are about 12% of respondents. So this is, we, we look at these themes in our methodology. Vision and values, teaching and learning, community engagement, and management. Because these are things that are, research shows that superintendents who have or are high in these areas tend to be successful. So just as far as the strengths of the district, and you can see very similar to what we collected in the focus groups, except technology was mentioned as, as your number one, that technology is available in the, in the classrooms. The district employees, effective teachers, administrators, and support staff. The schools are safe. Employees are held accountable to high standards. Again, this is something that we heard as a theme, is something that needs to continue to happen. And the district has high performance standards for, for students. So those are the, the areas that came up as your district's strengths. I'm going to, I'm not going to spend some time on the profile characteristics because I know Dr. Adams is going to take care of that. But what I do want to talk about, and you all can look through all these numbers. This is where we, where each person who took the survey was allowed to fill out four things that they thought was most important in a new superintendent. So you can see, based on disaggregated group, that by far the most important thing, and I've just got to move you all out of my way on my screen so I can see the numbers. But by far, fostering a positive professional climate of mutual trust and respect among faculty, staff, and administrators. You see that all groups had that in their top four. So that's why they're all blue. And as you read the others, you can compare. Okay, as far as the state of the district item analysis, we already talked about the strengths. But what I want to talk about are, these are questions. The questions are over to the left. And then the respondents are asked to respond according to a Likert scale from strongly disagree, disagree, neither disagree or disagree, agree, strongly agree. So a long, a continuum of five. What this shows is where your, your respondents, your, your community members chose four and five, where they strongly agree or agree on the following statements. We talked about the strengths. That's where the strengths come from. What I do want to just mention is where they see your challenges. And these statements come from, you know, research as far as what successful districts are doing, what successful superintendents are doing. So you will find that only 30% agreed, or strongly agreed, that the division is headed in the right direction. So that, I'm sure that's a concern that you're going to want to investigate with the superintendent candidates and choose someone who can make sure to not only communicate the right direction, but make sure everybody knows you're headed in that way. Only 32% of respondents agreed or strongly agreed that the division engages with diverse racial, cultural, and socioeconomic groups. So there, and we did hear that in the focus groups, too, that some additional work needed to be done there. 33% of respondents, only 33, so this is the lower end, agreed or strongly agreed that the division makes decisions based on data and research. So again, you saw that in one of the challenges, that that's expected. And 37% of respondents agreed, only 37% agreed or strongly agreed that there is transparent communication from the district to the community. So again, those very much reflect what we also heard in the focus groups. And those are the things that we would recommend you ask questions of the candidates on how they would address those things. For the leadership profile, I, I again, Bill, do you want me to talk a little bit about the survey, or you just want to hit it in yours? Because...
What, why don't you?
Summarize it?
You know, summarize, even though that I'm going to, I'm going to pick it up in the desired characteristics. Why don't you summarize the four categories?
So on your leadership profile, the top four qualities that were, were presented were 59% expected the new superintendent to foster a positive professional climate of mutual trust and respect among faculty, staff, and administrators. 48% understand, want the new superintendent to understand and be sensitive to the needs of a diverse student population. 42% want the new superintendent to pay attention to recruiting, employing, and retaining effective personnel. And the last of the four, 41%, want to provide transparent communication, the new superintendent to do that. So you can see all of these themes are really showing that, both in survey format and in focus group, that we were hearing many of the same things. So Dr. Adams, would you like to move on to the desired characteristics or take any questions?
I mean, I... Is there any questions from school board members? And if there, if there are, then let's try to address some of those now.
Mr. Vice Chair, may I, may I ask a question?
Oh, yes, sir. Mr. May, go ahead.
So I, to me, 1,400 responses out of 17,000 students and 1,300 employees and central office staff and us and everybody else and all of the community group. That seems like a very low number, like it's less than 1%. Am I, and then so as we try to, and I guess that's where I'm going with this. As, am I, am I understanding that it's right, that this was less than 1% of the potential to, and I know 17,000 is not a good number, but you could actually divide that in two, and, you know, you could choose some number, maybe 10,000. But I think we're probably less than 1% is what we ended up having for responses. So I'm just trying to understand, is this kind of normal, or is this an anomaly here in Hanover County?
You are not an anomaly. And I will tell you that, and, and, I mean, we appreciate all the advertising you did. You put it up on your website. You invited people personally via email a couple of times. So what you did to invite people really was more than many divisions or districts do. We do find that that's pretty typical as far as a respondent rate. So you do need to, that's why we say it's not a scientific sampling. It's everybody who wanted to, to, to respond. So you just need to keep that in mind as you're listening to what, what was, what was brought together.
Okay. And I say that only because that really skews as we try to figure out what is important. It, it could even skew the numbers so that if you're, you know, not that I think they have. I'm, I'm perfectly, I've read this and analyzed it pretty good, and not really super surprised. But I was surprised that no more participants than we had. That, that actually kind of shocked me a little bit. So thank you, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
And just to add one more thing, that, that, you know, we'd always like more. We would love to have more. But I will tell you, the fact that we saw the same themes being presented in different ways from different groups, that does, from a statistical standpoint, you know, I would think that it's at least worth listening to because we, we've heard the same themes over and over again. Thank you. Any other questions?
I'm sorry, Dr. Brown, let me ask one more question because I want to roll.
Okay.
So, so is an assumption, and that's a bad word, probably.
Not in research. We have to make assumptions.
Is an assumption, then, that, that the majority of our district is supporting what the, the board is doing and the road we're going down? That's where I'm really trying to go with this, is we work through these things. Because we got, you know, over the next month, month and a half, that's, that's our challenge, is to make sure that we're, we're trying to meet the needs of our constituents without knowing what our needs of the constituents are.
Well, and I would, I would, I would, I would expect that you use this as one tool, one piece, you know, one set of data. But it is by no means reflective of, you know, we can't say it is a sampling that reflects the rest of the community. We, we can't go that far. You all need to determine, as you look at it, how, is this, is this true? Do you, are you hearing other things? You know, why didn't people do the survey if they got it in their email? Is it because they're just happy with what's going on? You know, that, that doesn't come through in our data, but that could be something that, you know, you all could find out or understand in just talking to your constituents, but not through this data could you make that assumption?
Dr. Brown, let me jump in and provide some additional clarity. I think what's important to recognize, and I would concur with Colonel May, that this is normal for the size of the county. However, when people are very, very unhappy, we get more responses. So there's, there's generally an indication, and with the number of times we've done this, actually, if the turnout isn't really, really high, it probably shows that most people are happy with what's going on. So that's, that's one thing that we see. I think one other thing to recognize, during almost an entire week of collecting the data, there was inclement weather and schools were closed. That could have had an impact on whether some people responded or not. But I do think one thing that's very important about this, and this is a clarifying statement. I'm going to read this right from the report. "It should be emphasized that the data are not a scientific sampling, nor are they necessarily to be viewed as representing a majority of opinion of the representative groups to which they are attributed. Items are included if, in our judgment, they warranted bringing to your attention." And I think if you look at the data in that way, it's, it's important. The other thing I had intended to do before I get into the actual desired characteristics is give you some of the statements that were made under strengths. And, and, and I just highlighted, you know, there are hundreds of them, but I'm highlighting some that were repetitious and some that we use as we, we look at the, the number of times they came up. So under strengths, "Our schools offer a solid educational experience. Maintenance and expansion of our focus on education. Security and safety plan and initiatives. The no-cell phone, mobile device policy. Parent involvement and support. Overall, an excellent teaching staff that reflect community values. Improved level of cooperation and coordination with county supervisors and sheriff's department," which goes to, and we interviewed representatives from both county supervisors and the sheriff's, sheriff's department. "Traditional community values. Great family living environment. Excellent in addressing overriding mental health issues." And, and I'll, I'll jump now. As I said, there's hundreds of them. I'll go to the other side. Challenges. "Full enforcement of division and board policies and regulations. Full enforcement of safety and security for staff and students. Increasing student reading proficiency. Increasing student math proficiency. Building trust between school board, central office, building-level staff. Growth related to construction. Three primary elementary schools that are on the books." And one of the things that was actually mentioned as a strength but a challenge, that's your CTE programs. Great reputation. The challenge is, there are not enough spaces for those students that, that want to take advantage of that kind of education. So these are the things as we look at those actual comments versus the summaries to consider. And overall, there, there seemed to be a great deal of satisfaction with the, with the district. There's always room for growth. There's always room for improvement. So I, I just wanted to add that, and before I actually present the desired characteristics, because you, you may want to make some modifications based on your full review of all of the information. Any questions before we go on?
Bill, I just wanted to thank you for putting that in greater perspective. And the, the last comment that you made about our CTE program. At the time, we were kind of closed-mouthed in our budget process about launching some of those more specific items in our budget going forward. But now that we've let the cat out of the bag since, then we are expanding our CTE in the county. If, they should be aware of it by now because we've voiced that in, in various ways with the superintendent's presentation. And, and again, it's gone out to the entire community, and it's going to be a fully funded by our supervisors and the administrative side of the county. So it's going to be moving that forward relatively quickly because we've noticed, at least in Mr. May and I's three and a half years on the board, that every year we are turning down well over, between 100 and 200 students. So the demand has been steady, and we've recognized that. And now we're, and we have voiced that to the supervisors, and they agree. And, and it's good to have their support. And right now, I feel like the two boards are working very closely together in that regard. So I appreciate you bringing that up and also putting in perspective about the low turnout usually translates that most people are pleased. And I, I know as a board member, I'm not speaking for the entire board, but I know that in my neck of the woods, I hear a lot of positives out in the Cole Harbor district. So, thank you, sir. And Ryan and Bob Seifert, do y'all have any questions?
I'm good right now, Steve. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Bob? Flying Bob?
No questions for me, but I agree with those thoughts on the low turnout. I mean, the vast majority of parents that I speak with are very happy with our school system.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Dr. Brown?
Great. So, Dr. Adams, would you like me to put up the desired characteristics?
If you would, please. If you would, please. As the desired characteristics are going up, you've all had a chance to look at them. So I'm going to give a summary of the content and, and how we arrived at that. So as I said, we listened to all the groups. You're the governing body. So certainly, we compare all of the comments made by the school board, totally, all, all seven of you. And the comments made by each of the subgroups that we talked to, both internal and external stakeholders. And as you look at that, and as you see right at the top, we did, we listened to students, teachers, parents, staff, community members, certainly you, the school board, certainly county supervisors. Because it is one community as you look at the total community. So we looked then, and, and what were the, what were the overall themes? Well, what we saw is you want a strong, engaging, exceptional educational leader who possesses, you want him to be experienced, you want him to be a relationship builder, you want him to be engaged, innovative, and a transparent communicator. So they were the three major areas. But as we look then under experience, well, there's 13 areas under there. That's a lot. So what are some of them? Well, I, you've got them, but I, because we have the public involved, I'd like to focus and make sure everyone hears these. And, and so I'm going to paraphrase what's in those, those 13 experienced items. And then we'll talk about the seven items in relationship as well. So right off the top, what's one of the most important things? You're looking for an experienced educational leader who's focused on student success and the well-being of all students. And that, that becomes the center of all decisions. I, that's pretty, pretty hard to argue with that. Looking for someone that has a track record of being accountable and that holds others accountable. Someone who demonstrates the ability to connect at all levels in what is a complex community and certainly a complex school division. Someone who's confident, decisive, resilient, maintains the focus on the division goals and initiatives. Someone who can demonstrate the ability to navigate and challenge, challenging demographics and changing student demographics. There's a reason why people want to move into Hanover County. A talented facilitator who can motivate and engage stakeholders at all levels. Certainly someone has had demonstrated success in the size and scope of your school division. Certainly someone that displays fiscal responsibility and has fiscal acumen. Someone who holds others and wants to create an environment where there's high performance and continuing rigorous teaching environment that you have. Someone who builds on the, the academic success and the instructional programming that you already have. Someone who exhibits not only integrity, but a can-do attitude. And then someone that, that has empathy and the ability to connect with stakeholders and to get stakeholders to come together on common goals. And certainly someone who can navigate through uncertainty and be able to adjust when it's necessary to adjust. They're the highlights in terms of the 13 areas of experience. And then as we looked at a relationship builder, certainly somebody that can build trust, a trust gainer, someone that can unify, somebody that can be, have a presence, be approachable though, be responsible and responsive, and at the same time, build relationships across all groups. Especially in the ability to work not only with the governing body, but working with the staff and working with parents and certainly with, with students at mind first. Certainly someone that develops and maintains a professional collaborative, respectful relationship with, with all stakeholders. Someone who seeks input prior to making decisions, communicates the rationale for those decisions, and then is willing to stand behind them and has a strong set of core values. Someone that maintains organizational accountability when making operational decisions and understands the value of parent and community input. Someone that develops and respects and empowers district leadership. And that's leadership across the board, from central office to each building level. Someone who establishes and maintains a safe and secure environment. And one of the things that we always hear when we talk about students and students belonging, someone who makes students feel like they're always playing on their home field. Just that, 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 well, we believe Hanover County feeling. When we look at the seven areas under engagement and transparent communication, communicates regularly, clearly, concisely, in ways that engages and values both your internal and external stakeholders. Someone who can create a sense of community around shared values for excellence. Someone who embraces creativity and innovative thinking and willing to take new approaches to problem solving if they're needed. Someone who sustains professional and collaborative relationships, certainly with the school division board, you, the board, in addition to certainly staff and community. And someone who understands the building, the advantage of those collaborative relationships. And someone has the ability, if there's setbacks, to rebound from those setbacks. So they were the seven areas roughly under the engaged and innovative transparent communicator. So if we boil it then down to what are the four things the successful candidate needs? Well, someone that's demonstrated exemplary successful educational leadership experience in a community or school division with similar demographics, expectations, culture, and needs. That's saying a lot. Someone that has experience in dealing with growth and, and what's going to happen. We know there's three elementary schools on the books, so construction facilities, the piece of it. And then someone that's had a proven success in, in leading and operating in a diverse educational environment such as yours. Obviously, they need to be able to get the Virginia Department of Education certificate, either be immediately eligible or currently hold it. So they were the areas that we would like to use in vetting candidates and actively recruiting, especially over the next three weeks as we do that. So we'd like either your thumbs up or any changes that a majority of you would like to make before we post this and before we go to the next steps.
Any board members with comments or questions? Bob and Bob and Ryan?
Nothing here.
No comments for me.
Mr. May?
Yeah, I think, I thought that was a great summary, Bill, and I appreciate the level in depth that you went into there and totally concur. So I look forward to hearing the rest of what you have to say.
Well, can we, if you're, if you're comfortable with what we've come up with, do we have your permission to move forward? As a board?
So board members, I guess what he's asking us to do is we need to, I just need a consensus to go ahead. Does any board member have a reason not to move forward? Is there, and I'll go around the room. Ryan, are you okay? Yes, a thumbs up or down?
Thumbs up.
A thumbs up.
All righty, Greg? Madam's acting vice chair?
Thumbs up.
No, madam, madam acting vice chair. Ms. Lynn?
Thumbs up.
All right, that's all seven of us, Bill. We're good.
All right. Well, thank you. And thank you for your due diligence in reviewing these materials before tonight's meeting so that we could move forward, share these. We'll get, we'll get these posted. We'll work with Terry and make sure they're on the website, both the, the materials that were presented and especially those desired characteristics.
So the next step then is that y'all will now start accepting applications, is that right?
Yes, there's actually 23 in the system right now and just a number of other applicants that have said to us, as soon as you get the school board desired characteristics, get them to us so we can look at them and expect many of them to put in their applications.
So I'll just, I want to say this as the chair. Y'all have really done a great job. I think, I know that y'all have gone out of the way in trying to gather input. I know that y'all have gone out of the way to try to decipher the input that you have received. And y'all have done a really good job of trying to be in front of the challenges or whatever we may be facing. And I just want to thank you for that, Bill. And I speak on behalf of the board. I think it's noticeable by the, the very positive thumbs up and not a whole lot of questions tonight that, you know, I could not be happier for us to be where we are today. You know, now, if I got to interview 50-some candidates, I may not like you near as much. But right now, at, at the point where we are, I really appreciate what y'all have done. You and Dr. Brown and Stacy and, you know, it's, it's just remarkable. I think you've given us a good product that we can use. I think you actually validated, I'm speaking pretty freelance right now, but I think you validated what I think this board feels is important. And we do have a quality education system. And all we want to do is see it fly higher and higher. And so, you know, that's, I just appreciate everything you've done. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And if we continue our job, we'll make your job at the end difficult because you're going to have some great candidates to choose from.
Well, thank you, Bill, on behalf of the board that's here in person tonight. Especially your first goal. Your first goal happens to be a school board goal and happens to be also our number one goal as, as a body is focusing on student success and safety. And you presented that quite well. And I also appreciate the fact that you had two in-person sessions and you had two virtual sessions. So you, you optimized the, I guess, the ability of the public to participate if they chose. And then also reaching out to the public online. You did that quite well too. So again, you could not have done any better as far as reaching out and trying to get better participation. So I applaud y'all and your company for that.
Thank you.
Hey, hey, Mr. Vice Chair, I'm sorry, I just have one other thing to say. I thought it was really unusual today when Terry Stone said that, you know, if I get a shout-out tonight, I think y'all owe me something special. And what does Dr. Brown do? The very first thing is talk about how great Terry Stone is. I think we were set up, Mr. Vice Chair.
Oh, really? Well, you know, Mr. May and Mrs. Seifert, Mr. Martin and, and Bill and Dr. Brown, Terry Stone's face is bright red right now.
Mission accomplished.
I think you made her blush, but we appreciated her greatly. Yep.
And so did, so did we throughout the entire process and will continue to rely on her.
Okay, all righty. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that. I think that's about all we have for y'all tonight.
Do we have any?
Have a good evening.
Do we have any other business, Mr. Vice Chair?
I have no other comments.
So I don't hardly ever get to do this. So, Mr. Vice Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Oh, there's a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Oh, there's a second? Any discussion? At all? All those in favor, say hi. Hi. All those opposed? I think the eyes and the flying at 35,000 feet, got it. We are adjourned.
Well, I'm calling, I'm sitting down to have my nurse give me medicine.